Ready, set.
We have to leave that from the pledge.
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 There you go.
Awesome job.
Ready, set, I.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with whose objective is justice, moral.
So, hi, beautiful. Tonight we have Mrs. Muir and Mrs. Pavel here with our sixth grade students to talk about our hands-free CPR.
Hands-only.
Hands-only.
See, I did it again. I got in your head.
This is no today. It says hands-only CPR. Oh, my goodness. Thank you. Thank you.
This was the first year Mrs. Pavel and I invited two nurses from Hampton Hospital who came to offer a volunteer to train our sixth grade. We thought that would be exciting for them. So they started their health class with today and they're going to learn how to save a life. So it was pretty amazing. I have Carter Shantz, Stina Peche, Abigail Davidson, and Levi Shepherd. So they have offered, they thought it'd be exciting to show you what they learned.
So what is hands-only CPR? Hands-only CPR is CPR without mouth-to-mouth breath. It is recommended for use by people who see a teen or adult suddenly collapse in and out of hospital space, such as at home, at work, or in a car. It consists of two easy steps. Call 911 or send someone to do that. Push hard and fast in the center of the chest.
These are some of the comments from our classmates while we were learning about CPR. I did not realize you should first tap on an unconscious person on the shoulder to see if they respond. I did not know that CPR helps pump the blood between the heart and the brain. I learned that CPR is really important. I would not want to do it in real life, but if I had to, I would. I did not realize even kids can save lives.
I always wanted to learn how to do CPR and now I know and want to keep learning more. CPR saved my dad's life, so I know how important it is and I'm very thankful that I know how to do CPR. Knowing how to do CPR has life-saving possibilities and that is powerful and I want to share.
Some of my classmates written comments about hands-only CPR. I learned to not press too fast or too slow and to press 120 pushes for one minute. I am thankful to know that if someone goes into cardiac arrest, I may be able to save their life. Maybe someday I can save somebody because of what I learned.
Okay. Also, something important to know is that while we did this in the classroom on the smart board, they actually watched a video with the first responders practicing. So the other kids that weren't participating at the moment could actually watch it. It was a video that was put together by the first responders.
And I think the boys would like to start the two-person CPR and they voted on the song. I think we all know the song.
So the first man since I've seen one, did you say the first? Yeah.
So that way we could stop if the blood wasn't flowing through.
So that was great. So cool. They practiced one person, but this song is three minutes long. I told them. And somebody would have called 911 and I'm pretty sure they'd be here by now. And then the girls would like to show you one person. It doesn't matter. It was different colors. We hear cracking and I said sometimes you do break ribs, but they're alive. Perfect. That's perfect. That's a little tiny. Good job.
Excellent job.
That was awesome.
Great job.
Hard work, a workout.
It's hard work. Does anybody have any questions?
Did you teach this to all of the health classes or did it start of just sixth grade? That makes a ton of sense.
But next year we'll make it fifth grade because we also will get it in seventh grade, right? Junior high. So we'll take maybe a fifth and another.
We were fortunate, we came six times.
Wow. Did they tell you where you're supposed to do the compression? How do you locate where you do the compression?
Well, it's like right here, which is like right in between. Yeah. So it's like right here.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you for being here.
Great job, you guys.
Save a life, super teacher.
It's a great job.
Have a good night.
Those are awesome.
Are they?
Oh, okay. Oh, right from the assistant school.
Okay. So we need to hand, we did this, we need to hand the meeting over to Dr. Mose. Yes. So at this time on our agenda, we need to re-award, so it's going to be more collection. So at this time, I will take nominations for the position of chair and then following the selection of chair by the committee, I'll turn the meeting over to that person to run through all of the other positions. I nominate Kate Alexander. Second. Any other nominations? Okay, none. We will close the nominations. All in favor? Okay. I have nominations. I will turn it over. Okay. We'll do vice chair and I would entertain a motion for the role of vice chair. I nominate Megan Panic. Second. Okay. All in favor? All right, I should ask if there's any other nominations. Karen, I mean, Kristen necessarily.
I have a group call.
Yeah. I'm in favor, so I got that. Okay. We need to, sorry, I'm writing down the roles. Secretary.
And I have Kristen Chewie. Second.
Any other nominations? All in favor? Kristen, Tantasko.
Tantasko is next.
Okay. Before I, we do the nominations for this, can I get some clarification because I'm going to give them some confusion? Is there an open seat on the Tantasko board, on the Tantasko school committee at this moment?
We have a member who will be resigning her term in June.
So she's just gonna, she's just finishing and then she is relocated.
So there will be one that will be open for a joint appointment between the remaining members of the school committee who are Sturridge and the board of directors.
For the rest of her term. Which is just one more year. So there is an opportunity if we have multiple people for another one to pursue the appointment.
Submit their name through the joint appointment process.
Yes. Correct. Okay. Knowing that, I'm going to nominate Mary Beleza for the Tantasko rep. Any other nominations? All in favor? I'm writing this over in the background, I'm just trying to keep it straight. Sorry. So now we have Union 61, Union 61, and two Union, or just one. Three firsts and then we can do alternate one and alternate two. And she's already off. Okay. Right. So she would, I think she likes to look at, she's probably alternate two. Yeah, no, that's alternate. Okay. So let's do the first Union 61 rep. So it's a batch of three. What three would you like to be? Okay, so let's just put a slate of three. And actually, Karen, I've not realized this. This is what happens two times a year. You all go and there's just three who vote. You all go, you all participate. We typically don't put the Tantasko rep as one of the, you can, but we typically haven't, that's because she can already vote as a Tantasko rep. So we typically spread it. We should have the chair as a Union 61 rep. It just so happens that my board of directors meetings for my paying job is on that night, so it's important that we have a backup. When I go, it'll be like after and if we don't have it on the third Tuesday of the month, which sometimes does happen if there's a vacation week meeting, it's the fourth Wednesday. I've been here too long. So at any rate, so that's why it's important. So I'll go ahead with the nominations then. I nominate Karen Koval, Kristen Chewie, and Megan Panic as our Union 61 reps. Oh, no, I have to nominate myself. Okay, you nominate them. I can't nominate myself. Okay. Okay, Karen Koval, Kristen Chewie, and Kate Alexander. If you want to do it all in one swoop and say alternate one and alternate two, then you could kind of vote. Alternate one, Megan, and alternate two. On rare occasion, Mary can vote, vote Union 61. Yeah. Yeah, we can have open dialogue about this. Let's just think about Mary. Okay. Well, you can see the lay of the land. But you'll end up needing to be there. So let's, but Karen, I'm going to withdraw those nominations just because we're, I think we're kind of working through this. I think it would make sense if we nominated Megan, Kristen, and I and nominate you as the first chair and Mary as the first alternate and the second alternate. So let me, I'll repeat that. So Union 61 rep nominations are Megan Panic, Kristen Chewie, and Kate Alexander with the first alternate being Karen Koval and the second alternate being Mary Beleza.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. We now need to hold our, we are, every year required to take, just for Karen's sake, every year we have to take a position on school choice. We typically do it in the main meeting. If we were not to make this vote, the default is actually that we are a school choice school. So it's very important based on, and we feel that it's important, we have for years, based on our own already classroom sizes and just the pressures of the building and the curriculum that we're not able to take students outside of Sturridge at this point. So, but, so we go through this every year, take a vote on, on the school choice. I think one year we had to have a special meeting because of the fact that something happened this May and I have a special.
Just to vote on this.
June 1st, you must submit to the department of ed. So you have to have a public.
Well, you officially have to have the public hearing in case the Republican wants to say anything on the subject. So I would open up the public hearing now. Is there any conversation on school choice? Hearing none, I will make the motion that Burgess Elementary is not a school choice school and we will not accept students through a school choice program. Second. Any discussion? Okay. Rusty, we'll do some rusty on this. So now I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the April 4th regular session and the executive session, April 4th session. So, and I will second it. We can't actually do the, we don't have a quorum to vote because Karen would have to abstain.
So we'll push this to June. Yeah, or I think you could vote, especially in a new meeting. So for example, a new committee would be able to vote four minutes. Otherwise, you'd never be able to, you know, if there was a.
True.
So I think that's fine.
Okay.
She was here.
She was here.
She was here, so she didn't speak to.
Very good. I would agree with that. The spirit of it isn't to not move minutes. Okay. So all in favor of approval? That's great. Okay. You have the latest, somewhat latest financial report, which I think shows us exactly where we should be with, you know, winding down, but I mean, two months left in the fiscal year. You've got some funds sitting there, not an exorbitant amount, everything, the year's been running pretty good. So I think at this point in time, we should be able to do what we usually do right now, which is look to top off the oil tank, look to, we probably can purchase the copy paper this year from this year's budget and put us in a good shape for next year. And then we'll take a look at it again early June to see where we are. And I think it could be. And all signs are at town meeting that our budget request will be supported. So, yeah, we went, we went with the big honor. They took the vote to support the budget as requested. Great. Okay. Communication. It's like there was a thank you note. Grade art show. And then we were asked to please make sure that junior high, you knew that junior high was inviting you, if available, to attend their morning memorial day ceremony, Veterans Breakfast. Well, there's a great day. I know that Burgess doesn't have to meet. Up to the whole day, you know, this is some great activities for junior high. Okay. On, how are you?
Well, always lots going on at Burgess, particularly in the spring. Our PTH helpers have been wonderful. Jagafan has taken place and just lots of classroom events, end of the year, sort of beginning of the next year, all at the same time. We did have, you'll notice that enrollment is stable. We held our second kindergarten screening yesterday and we have over 100 future Burgess kindergarten students and we'll have their annual open house on May 31st. We continue the NCAS testing cycle. As you know, ELAs done, packed up, shipped off, the materials that we did receive. We're looking ahead to the math from starting May. I believe that's wrong, I believe it's 13. We'll check the dates. And science, technology, and engineering, which I believe that we mentioned last meeting, we actually pushed those dates further down. So those are the 21st and 21st and when they will be done. That's just for fifth grade. Professional development, we have another early release day on May 10th. There's lots of different activities going on. Big focus for the day is the Nat Geo online component. The teachers will be receiving some more training on that as well as class placement. We are instituting a new universal screener for social emotional learning that we will be implementing next year, but we will start the march this year. Lots going on within each grade level. Kindergarten went to the Connecticut Science Center. The Friday before break, yeah, the Friday before break, everything was wonderful. Lots of science going on in the classrooms. We have plant activities. We have solar system. Second grade does a wonderful unit every year for opening day, which is near and dear to my heart. Fifth grade traveled to Boston last month for, to visit the Freedom Trail. Always a well-received trip. And health office, lots going on there. As you may recall, Burgess hosted Rita Shiano a few years ago. She came back and talked to parents about the importance of monitoring social media and different parenting challenges and strategies. Additionally, there was a screening of the documentary Screenagers that happened last week, I think, last day night. We did have a good turnout for Burgess families, Burgess present and past, so we were very happy to see that. It was very informative. Go ahead. It was a lot of Burgess. Yeah, and so we were very happy to see that. And the documentary itself was wonderful, so. It's a lot to think about. Yep, it says a lot to think about. And just a couple of things that didn't make the update. As you know, we did have a retirement in special education. Lynn Hayhild has officially announced her retirement. So you'll see, you may see a posting for special education position. And Jack Hanavan has, he will be retiring in September. Yep, and so we will be posting for an assistant principal position.
Wow. You guys, I did not know. Because we are posting. Of course. Yeah. He was, he didn't, Jeff didn't want to necessarily announce and, you know, we did have a conversation and we really do need to get out there. The committee will be very mad. And so he agreed to announce it to the staff, so we, we let the staff know. Is he still going to stay over on the roof, like, can he come back? I don't know. We got some Jagafan results. He needs to shave his head. That's probably. This has to be in the job description. Jack, I don't think he's going to. You have to be willing to have your head shaved. Hold on, I'll put it right here. I don't know how many candidates. I mean, he's already anticipating it because we're scheduled to be Jagafan assembly and it has to be on a Monday because that's when Jack's barber is available. So I'm assuming he's, he's planning on. He's also named Jack, I believe. Yeah, so. I didn't realize his barber came in. It is his barber. It's his. But anyway, so. Oh, sorry. Yeah, there's. So this is, can everybody write draft because this has actually not been approved by the school improvement council? There's extra copies if our. Yeah. Yep, thank you. So in keeping with our district improvement plan, we do follow the same overarching goals. We have the goal, goal number one is to increase student achievement and as with this year, writing is a primary focus. We'll be taking it a step further, looking at, you know, establishing common scoring practices, establishing what are called anchor papers so that when teachers are looking at what's a 4-3-2-1, we have something to compare it to. We also are looking to continue to improve our science, technology, and engineering achievements with the implementation of the Discovery Ed program for grade six and the implementation of Project Lead the Way. We'll look to improve our history and social science achievement by unpacking 2018 history and social science standards. Goal number two, to maintain and enhance the district comprehensive program of student support services. We will continue to work to establish a positive school climate through our PBIS system. We will fully implement a tier one curriculum, which we did do this year, but just to continue that margin, maybe enhance that a little bit, establish common expectations within other environments other than the classroom. And as I mentioned in my report, the implementation of the REVIEW 360, the social emotional screener tool. We did have a goal this year for meeting the diverse mathematics needs of fifth and sixth grade students and we had the establishment of a math team and we haven't gotten their results. They participated in an international exam, so we'll see how they did. And we will adjust also our math curriculum and schedule. We're looking to enhance that a little bit more. The objective number three, to maintain and enhance the district use of technology to support teaching, learning, and communication. Again, similar in to last year, just getting the people, folks acclimated to Google Suite and the additional devices, taking that and next step further and making sure that we're providing the regular training and professional development and integrating technology throughout the curriculum. Erin Parker, this past year, did a lot of push into the classrooms. Mike, if you want to speak to that. So she was going in doing units on, oops, sorry, on different Google features and she is going to continue to do that and we're hopefully going to drill it down even further into the early elementary with the iPads. The next goal, which again, we did make progress on, to develop and maintain positive relationships with the members of the school, local communities. Our cross-generational opportunities have greatly expanded. We have our VIP program, where parent, senior volunteers are coming in, working within the classrooms, and we're inviting them to more and more events. We have a Penn Health program that actually, they're going to come, seniors will come to visit Burgess on June 6th, one of the third grade classrooms, doing cursi-kenries, they're practicing their cursi-, but they'll get to meet their Penn Pals on the 4th. The property tax abatement program, we now have, I think, four solid volunteers doing that on a regular basis and one of them in Duke is doing lunch duty. Regular basis, something like that. And we're looking to expand our homeschool communications and how we'll go about that as a TVB. Again, we'll be working with the school improvement council next Monday to have this. So I wonder if there's something like an app, sort of an online information. A variety of ways we're thinking. Any suggestions would be welcome. Well, is that the part that we would talk about Jupiter grades to get parental, you know, a little bit more of a line of visibility? Is it common to use either Jupiter grades or Remind app or some of these different elementary levels?
Not typically at the, certainly not the primary or even the other, but middle school is typically that age.
Yeah, we all.
The Remind app is used by.
I use it. I think I'm there, Mama.
Yeah, we have, yeah, all the way through the Remind app is used, but that's not to, and not in the means of communicating student progress, just as a communication tool.
That's still very great. Communication, because some people are kind of used to that, maybe they have to that. Okay. Thank you.
There's a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know, last year, I want to know how the fields were going. I remember we were going to do more expensive watering and we were getting it, the working, did you want to tell?
Well, it's, it's hard to tell. Everything looks good. We are on schedule to have things done there because of the 21, the historic 21 days of rain within the month of April. It did set some things back a little bit, but we are ready. Softballs opening day is Saturday. So we're good to go for that.
But the grass is good.
It is. Truegreen, they contracted truegreen, they caved in and treated the.
It looks like pristine.
They treated during vacation week, Thursday vacation week. So, yeah, so I believe that those systems are in place. The watering obviously hasn't been an issue. But. I did go the other day and spent some time walking around the fields as I have a new softball player. And I know, I'm jealous that you weren't there in 42 degrees watching everybody hit. Everybody runs, everybody scores. But the lower, the volleyball, you know, that like there were tire tracks and I always wish that we could connect with, and this is, you know, not for now, but wish we could connect with BTs like they used to have and almost like connect with them to help, help us, you're the ones that park down there. Help us communicate. Well, with the volleyball and like have them help to maintain it and then they can use it. Because wouldn't, wouldn't that make sense for the adults to use that kind of a thing down there when they're right there? I don't know. It's just a thought, but it's not for.
Well, you put that in, I'll create jobs.
Brian, I mean, I feel like that way it would just get used too, because if you don't use it, that's when the weeds come into it and you might, they may want to use that. Like, I mean, it's on the school property, but it might, there's not another one around. So, okay, sorry. Thank you. Okay. Let's go to superintendent of sports.
Okay, we have just a few updates. The old Sturridge Academy, just to let you know, April 1st, the Department of Ed provides us the numbers and I could not remember whether we had talked about them last month. So there were two new kindergarten according to free enrollment at OSA from Sturridge. So this year we had 11, so that will make the total 13, which is still fairly small.
So ironically, you're talking about that and just because it's up and I apologize interrupting, but first of all, let me commend this administration for how you handled last Fridays and the staff and everything else for how you all handled that. Well, and I'm sure it was going to come up, but I'll let you do that, but I have somebody that works with me whose daughter attends from Southridge, the charter school. And they were in the, like, the visitor's center and it was kind of scary to me because those.
Let's go to superintendent department.
Okay, we have just a few updates. The Old Sturbridge Academy, just to let you know, April 1st, the Department of Ed provides us the numbers, and I could not remember whether we had talked about them last month. So there were two in kindergarten, according to the pre-enrollment at OSA from Sturbridge. So this year, we had 11, so that will make the total 13, which is still fairly small.
So ironically, you're talking about that and just because it's up, and I apologize interrupting, but first of all, let me commend this administration for how you handled last Fridays and the staff and everything else for how you all handled that. Well, and I'm sure it was gonna come up, but the, I'll let you do that, but I have somebody that works with me whose daughter attends from South Ridge, the charter school. And they were in the, like, the visitor's center, and it was kind of scary to me because those buildings, it makes you realize, where do you go? You're in a mobile unit. Those are, those are gone. So it was kind of frightening to me as to, you know, did they come over here? Did they go to, you didn't have a place to go. And that was kind of, just anyway.
So I did want to thank Kathy and all the staff, the law enforcement who helped. We talked about how Mima is always telling you to drill for things at the worst possible moment because that's when it's gonna happen. And 30 seconds before dismissal is the actual worst possible. So we felt that we were comfortable to check the box that they had mastered severe weather response because the staff, administration, again, Hillary fire police in, at Burgess and in all of our schools was just tremendous to coordination, instant coordination with buses, two different, as you know, two different bus companies. You know, we have the town of Sturbridge and then we have McCarthy. And even at the high school, middle school, the kids, you know, who were in clubs, far more obvious athletes at the high school, got them written to the auditorium. We have people actually.
Hi, actually.
We have people who came off the road and asked if they could shelter at home school with Sturbridge. Because, you know, you're driving down 148 and it's, you should shelter immediately.
Right. Right. So. But what you might not hear is that, like, the kids told us was that the teachers were amazing. And it was the older kids, I'm sure you don't, you know, train for how to calm a sixth grader who was acutely aware of the situation that is crying. And so I, I mean, I just heard amazing things from a lot of the different kids that were there. Parents that were in the pickup line, I believe, had to come in too.
We had.
Yeah, or some of them did. And I just heard that it was just a really well-done, so kudos to all of you, especially the, you know, everybody that was with the kids and everything.
Kathy, great, just an amazing job. By the time I actually communicated, which was like two minutes after around, you know, we just make sure we send a connection. Every single, our credit being reported to our, our kids are in, parent pickup line is in, and it was just.
We evacuated to, or sheltered in place to the lower gym around, almost 1,200 people because we did call in. If anybody wanted to come in, could come in, and the bus drivers as well. And when looking at the video footage, just trying to capture, you know, you know, what we did, from the time I called to the classrooms, it was eight minutes and we had everybody in the lower gym. And that's, so you're moving a lot of children, a lot of adults, so just a remarkable job.
Eight minutes. For a parent's perspective, it was just flawless.
Thank you, so thanks to everybody here.
Liza was angry she put you on.
The hail was so bad in Grand Field, we had to actually wait till some of it melted to get off the road. There was ice on the road.
Shovable, right?
Yeah, it was crazy. Yeah, very strange situation. So negotiations, a reminder to our negotiation subcommittee, who are Kristen and Kate, the 16th. That will be at 2:30 at the junior high. And the reason we're doing it at the junior high is it allows us to start a little earlier. We have to do the training and then the negotiations. So we'll let the junior high folks exit and then move up there. And then we have some other movements of meetings. A reminder, the June school committee meeting will be June 3rd, 6:00 PM at the high school. Typically, we meet in the cafeteria, so that will be our, our location of posting. And then if we need to move or something, we could certainly do that. The joint committee will be June 4th, which is unusual. It's the first Tuesday of the month, but with the early release of school, we are doing our best to try and secure, frankly, forums around all of these meetings. Once folks get in their summer mode, it's very hard, a childcare change and all sorts of things. So we're moving four weeks of June, basically, into two weeks of June, and that's what we're trying to do. So the joint meeting will be June 4th prior to the Tantascor meeting. The superintendent evaluation documents will be emailed the week of the 13th, ideally on the 13th or 14th, with about a 10-day turnaround. We're going to do it very similarly to last year, which will be a brief update on each of the goals, as well as a couple highlighted areas under each of the four standards for superintendent evaluation based on the state board. And then we will do that survey again, so people won't have to mail in any documents. It'll just allow, Karen, you will probably get the documents, but you won't need to do an evaluation, as we said for previous year. And then just wanted to remind everybody that the TED brunch is Sunday, the champagne brunch, where they will be introducing the new grant recipients. We're always extremely thankful for the support we get from TED and the programs that they support that really enhance the traditional curriculum. And that is next Sunday again, or Sunday, we make that from 11:00 to 1:00 at the public access. Tickets are $50 a piece, and I believe you can still purchase them. So, and I think that that is it.
Yeah, chugging along.
Thank you. Kathy, while you were out, we did talk even more about the, I just, I stepped all over Aaron's toes because as she was talking about Old Sturbridge Village, I just, I want to make sure that we publicly, I mean, it was just an awesome response last Friday. But you were out, and then I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you very much.
All right, public access. Hey, Jen.
Yeah, you're all good.
Good. Okay.
There are 29 days left.
I know. That's amazing.
It is.
Twenty-eight and a half.
All right.
Oh, well, for students.
Today was 29, yeah.
Right.
Well, yeah, so 27 and a half. Oh, plus the TV day, so.
Right. That's what I mean, so it's really, I'm counting too.
We're frantic. At this point, we're always one foot in, the current year, and one foot in the next year. And we have far less time to get it all done. So we're all a little.
I think that it's carefully wished for, right? Because we all looked at you. We all looked at you, like, we'll never get out there.
Yep, no, every year that's been, you know, the whole.
It has never. Oh, let's get out there. And if you talk to any of this year's seniors, they are.
Other than that, of course they are.
Ah, they are angry, they are like.
They at least got one. Doctor knows they gave them one.
They gave them one. I got some lovely tweets. They love me.
Thank you.
Only after they.
After the bullying.
Cyberbullying me all the way through.
For not giving us a snow day.
So they were nice when they got it.
Some committee, we're going to Tantascor report.
Just an update on the window project funding at the junior high. It's coming at $2 million. 887,400 is our share, the Tantascor share, and the balance is being funded. Of that, 600, roughly, 687,000 we can cover with district funds. And the rest will be divided, paraded to each of the towns, which, with Sturbridge's share being $24,275 a year for five years. And this is going to be, yeah, this is going to be voted.
Is that gonna come out of precept? Is this in the budget, is it?
No, it's not, it's not.
It's a town.
First of all, it's the town.
Okay.
And it's not gonna be a fiscal '20 situation. What we're, at the town meeting, all five town meetings will have an article. Asking permission to move forward with the $2 million project. Borrow up to $2 million because you gotta borrow and then MSBA pays. The district voted to fund almost all of it. The $200,000 that's left that we're asking for the five towns to fund, project would go out to bid in the fall to start work a year from now. So the actual funding piece of it from the towns wouldn't happen into it until fiscal '21.
Okay.
And, you know, it's a total of 200,000. For Sturbridge, it's a total of 98,000 or so.
Over five years.
Which we're gonna offer to borrow over five years. And it's pretty small, but we'll talk about a little bit of the town meeting, I'm sure, and the finance committee is aware.
And that number, is, are we voting, at the town meeting, are we voting on, we're voting on that number?
The $2 million number that the town. MSBA legal language is that long and requires that you put the whole project. So we're gonna have to talk at town meeting and say, we're not asking you to fund $2 million. This is what we're asking.
Right, it was similar to this.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I thought the article was just for a little slice.
It's almost, yeah, it's crazy, no, it's the whole.
All five towns have to agree to the project.
Yes.
Yes.
Exactly, they in that sense have to give us permission to do the project and borrow $2 million, even though we'll never borrow $2 million.
Right, right.
But in other communities, they do. And the MSBA folks that we're working with are archetypal, like.
Is there any concern that it's not gonna pass all five towns?
With numbers that small, I don't say that, but very little. We feel confident that.
We have a project to have that pass.
Because there has been no request in 20 years to do anything to that.
And quite honestly, the $2 million figure, maybe we'll just see the bids will, you know.
I mean, that's worst case, right. We can have a little bit of compounding, and they come in a little bit lower, and it would be the towns that we don't.
Right.
So.
Sorry.
That'll be probably a very late article on town meeting.
Okay.
If we could, towards the end.
The other thing that is happening here is the upcoming grads are coming, they're gonna put on their caps and gowns and come to their individual, isn't that great? They called it Sunday, I can't remember.
Senior.
They're all gonna walk through all of it? I actually don't have the date, I'm not sure.
I think his date.
That would make sense, because that's someone who made up the graduation.
I love it.
Twenty eighth, twenty ninth.
Yeah, and they get to go see the, like, their, to everyone of their.
Some of them really just.
We're gonna line the halls.
And they'll walk through. And then because there will be children who entered the district from seventh grade on, whether they moved in, school choice, technical from tuition, we're gonna give those kids the choice to kind of pick up. Because it's not just to go back and obviously hopefully see your kindergarten teacher, but can't believe what you look like when you're 18, and you're gonna graduate. But also for the younger kids to kind of see them.
When is it again?
It's either the 20th or the 20th, they apologized.
Oh, my gosh. That's awesome.
Yeah, isn't it?
I'm so excited.
So we'll line the hall, students and students, and applaud them as they stroll through the halls.
The only other thing I had is the superintendent evaluation, which Erin covered, but please fill it out. It drives me crazy. I want to have 100% fill it out here. It's crazy, it could not possibly be easier than they've made it.
Right, exactly.
You could not make it any easier. Maybe give a thumbs up or thumbs down, that could be easier. I don't know. Do we need to go to that? I don't know.
Everyone text emojis at the same time.
Senior schmooze, Wednesday the 29th.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Okay, old business. We will, I would entertain a motion to adopt, approve upon second reading and adopt BDFAE1, the school improvement plan, BDFAE2, ADC, ADDAE.
Actually, ADAE is to rescind.
Right, so the first three, we can do the first.
So to adopt the first three and rescind the fourth.
We'll do it on the second motion. So to adopt the first three, BDFAE1, BDFAE2, and ADC. So a second, second, and all in. Any discussion on these three? Call a favor? Then I would entertain a motion to rescind ADDAE core requirements. So second, and all in favor? Is there any new business? Under new business, can we just chat quickly? We'll talk about Ferry Beach later on at another, at another meeting, I assume, or we actually learn anymore.
Yeah, and we, I sent out an email to the chairs. So, send it to you. Looking to do it tonight, the joint meeting, actually. Because people would be there at 6:00, we felt like 5:15, folks would be there, and then, yeah, kind of see what direction we're gonna go in.
Okay. And then the other thing, just as soon as the report comes, we're gonna follow up with that and another in June as well? Or you have some?
These are the surveys that you have.
We've done before. So can you, are there, is this like just all details?
This is the actual results.
Oh, it's the actual results.
With the comments, yeah. And then we can, can we.
Did you want to go through these tonight, or did we want to review them and bring questions back for June?
I think that would be more.
June, I agree. Okay, I would agree with that. I just didn't want to, I couldn't tell if you were prepared to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That way you can take a look at it.
Yeah, that's.
It's been a couple of years. And we had, and we last meeting, the leadership started to talk to the other elementary principals to, some potential ideas for.
High grade, sixth grade, hybrid. We talk a lot, we do, we talk a lot about transition, and this really falls under that.
Yeah, it does.
And separation for the change to the junior high, which they're only there for two, I mean, so.
To just settle in in the.
Seven years, that's, so that too, there's a lot going into, we talk a lot about.
But it carries on, too, so.
Right. But what sorts of sixth grade transition supports can we start to put in place so that it's, yep, as they go in the district? That's probably what we got, for sure.
Great. Just Ferry Beach, can you take students, well, you could go on a day trip. Have we considered the Connecticut Science Center with the river, is it, do they do all the?
There was a science museum in.
No more maritime.
No more maritime.
Oh, okay. I was not those. Being, so I'll wait, but the Connecticut Science Center is amazing, but do they do them, I wonder? But they're not on the ocean.
Right, you still have.
And you have Project O.
You have Project O, so kind of, yeah. And then the big, something socially.
Yep.
That's in charge of.
She said all nighter.
Sold it a little too hard.
She said all nighter.
Pull him back on the, there's something, the late night.
Late nighter, she said.
Whatever.
There you go.
Late nighter. Some folks loved it, so I sold it, but I sold it real hard. I think I'm gonna end up owning it. We'll do something. I will recruit.